Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call to order the August twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen, regular meeting of the Planning Commission. The time is seven oh five. Could we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Ramirez?
Here.
Commissioner Korzek?
Present.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Here.
Commissioner Nickel?
Present.
Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Commissioner Sims?
Here.
Chair Lowell?
I'm also here.
And we have Vice Chair Barnes's excused absence today.
Correct. With that said, I would like to move on and could Commissioner Gonzalez lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Thank you very much. I'd like to move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Would anybody like to motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
We have a motion by Commissioner Baker. We have a second. We have a second by Commissioner Gonzalez. And just by a show of hands and a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion passes seven zero. Tonight's agenda is approved. Moving on to the consent calendar, of which all matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted in one roll call vote. There will be no discussion on these items unless members of the Planning Commission request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. And the consent calendar items tonight are the approval of the minutes. Does anybody have any comments on the regular Planning Commission meeting from July twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen?
Yes, I want to go on the record as abstaining from approval of the minutes as I was not seated.
Perfect. And Commissioner Venetta also was there, but she is not here anymore, so we have, everybody else can vote.
All will be abstaining.
Sims was also not there, so we have Commissioner Ramirez, Korzek, Commissioner Baker, Commissioner Gonzalez, Vice Chair Barnes, who's absent, and myself. So we have five people that can vote. I think that's right. One, two, three, four, five, yes.
I made sure, just to make it, make sure everybody understands and is clear on that, there's no legal requirement that you abstain. You're just choosing to abstain because you want to, but you can always still vote on it, especially if you've listened to the meeting and can approve that the minutes were accurate. Just want to make sure that nobody thought they had to.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Everybody agrees that the minutes are accurate? Okay, with that said, I'd like to motion to approve, I would like to motion to approve the minutes for the regular Planning Commission meeting of July twentieth, two thousand sixteen. Do we have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Commissioner Baker. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Any abstaining?
Yes.
Two abstains. Perfect. That's five to zero. Motion is approved. Moving on to the public comments portion. Public comments procedure, any person wishing to address the chair, the commission on any matter either under public comments section of the agenda or scheduled items or public hearings must first fill out a request to speak form available at the door. The completed form must be submitted to the secretary prior to... Sorry, my screen shifted on me. The completed form must be submitted to the secretary prior to the agenda item being called by the chairperson. And speaking to the commission, member of the public may be limited to three minutes per person, except for the applicant for entitlement. The commission may establish an overall time limit for comments on a particular agenda item. Members of the public must direct their question to the chairperson of the commission and not to any other member of the commission, the applicant, the staff, or the audience. Do we have any non-public hearing item speakerslips tonight?
We do not.
Perfect. Let's move on to public hearing item number one, which is case PA one-four-zero-two-seven, which is a plot plan. And the case planner is Claudia Manrique.
Yes, Claudia Manrique will be presenting this project as a District Five project. It's a multifamily residential project.
Dean, I am Claudia Manrique, the case planner for PA fourteen dash zero-zero-two-seven, which is a proposed thirty-nine unit apartment complex located on a two-point-six acre site along Hemlock Avenue, west of Hickok Street and east of Swigels Lane. We have aerial showing the site and includes three parcels. The project is located within the residential fifteen zoning districts, which allows up to fifteen dwelling units per acre. And this project meets the maximum density of fifteen. Here's the zoning map. As you'll see, the projects directly south, east, and west are also zoned R-15. And to the north is R-five, which is a single-family residential.
Claudia, can you pull the mic a little closer? Thanks.
Sorry. Adjacent developments to the project site include single-family homes, as well as multiple-family units and other apartment complexes. Access to this proposed site will be from a single driveway off of Hemlock Avenue. Site plan. This driveway will direct traffic north through the project with a internal loop. And this loop meets their emergency vehicle turnaround requirements from the fire department. The project includes a total of a hundred and nine parking spaces, including seventy carports and eight single-car garages, for a total of seventy-eight covered spaces. Then there's twenty non-covered spaces for residents, as well as ten gas parking spaces. All this meets the code requirement for the multifamily parking. The proposed project includes a main recreation and office building with an onsite manager apartment, as well as six two-story multi-unit buildings. There are a total of eighteen two-bedroom units and twenty-one three-bedroom units, for a total of thirty-nine dwelling units. The amenities proposed include a small gym facility and reception space, which are within the recreation slash office building, as well as private open space for each residential unit, which is provided by a mix of fenced yards, patios, and balconies. The proposed architecture is contemporary in design with stucco and stone veneer. And then there's various architectural relief provided through stone, foam trim, window shutters, concrete tile, and decorative metal railings, which will be along the balconies, staircases, and second-level walkways. And we have the elevation for building one A and one B. And then you can see that the colors are a neutral brown earth tone palette. This is the office slash recreation building. This same color palette. The site includes the twenty-five-foot front yard landscape setback, which will also include street trees. There's two landscape public open spaces for the residents within the project. There's also a ten-foot landscape area to the rear of the site, which will help buffer from the neighboring single-family residents to the north. Have a color conceptual of the site plan. And then this one will show a three-D rendering of the site to get a better idea of all the architectural relief of the project. The project was submitted in May of two thousand fourteen as a twenty-two-unit apartment complex with two parcels. And due to the odd shape, it was a challenge to meet the city code requirements, including setbacks, emergency access, and the parking requirements. Staff suggested to the applicant to, if it was possible, to get one of the adjacent parcels. The one to the east was available, and the applicant was able to inquire and resubmit the redesigned project in late March of two thousand fifteen. Since then, we have been working closely with the applicant on the site design, the elevations, and we have resolved any outstanding issues to date. Project is exempt under SEQA as infill, as it is less than five acres. Public notice was sent to all property owners within three hundred feet and posted on the site on August twelfth. And on August thirteenth, it was published in the Press Enterprise newspaper. Staff recommends approval of resolution number two thousand sixteen nineteen dash nineteen, certifying that the project is exempt under SEQA, one-five-three-three-two, as an infill development, and approved plot plan PA fourteen dash zero-zero-two-seven. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you have any questions or comments for staff? No? Okay, perfect. I'd like to invite the applicant up.
Good evening, all come, chair, and the commissioners and the staff. My name is Shiv Talwar. I'm the architect for the project. And we really want to thank you, the staff, for coordinating the project with us. And we comply with all the requirements. And we really appreciate all the efforts and recommendations. So we'd like to request you to approve the project, and I'll be glad to answer any question you have.
Thank you. Have any questions for the applicant? Okay. Do you have any questions for him, though?
I have two questions. I don't know what you want me to ask.
If we don't have any question for the applicant, then thank you, and we'll move on.
Thank you again. Thank you very much.
I do have a question. Thank you for coming tonight. Are any of these going to be Section Eight apartments?
It's not planned for that, but again, the Section Eight is welcome.
Okay, that was my only question. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If you say it's not planned for, but Section Eight is welcome, what's your anticipated rent?
I mean, it's not like definitely planned for that, but Section Eight is, you know, they're welcome.
What's your anticipated rent?
They can apply for rentals.
What's your anticipated rent?
We don't know the rent, anticipated rent for this one, but I have a owner who can answer that.
All right, we can approach that later. Thank you very much. Okay, then I would like to open up the public comments portion. I'm assuming we have a few speakers waiting. We have Mr. S. R., we have Estela Hernandez-Patel, followed by Rafael Brugeras.
Good evening, Chairman. Planning Commission body and staff. Again, my name is Estela Hernandez-Patel, and I reside on Hemlock Avenue. Been there for twenty-some years. And I'm here tonight to oppose the development of the apartments. There are plenty of apartments on Hemlock Avenue, if you don't know the area already. And it brings a lot of stress with a lot of transits. We have people walking the streets. It's, I want to say it's high crime. Statistically, I don't know what it is, but it concerns me and my family. It's a working-class community. On the side where the apartments are going to be built, there's a lot of single-story family homes and a few duplexes, but they're one-story. And on the, that's on the east side of Hemlock. And on the west side of Hemlock, there's two-story, three-story apartments. And it's a little disturbing for me and my family and some of my neighbors to have more apartments coming into my community, our community. And so I'm here today to speak of my opposition, and I hope that you seriously consider some redevelopment. And it appears that the staff is recommending approval, but they don't, I don't think they live in the area, because I don't see them. And I know, according to the report, it's within guidelines. But I do sincerely hope that something else could be developed. I know it's the R-15. But that concerns me too, and I'm thankful to the chair for asking the questions on Section Eight, because there's too many. Like I said, I've lived there. We sold, we bought from the original owner a number of years ago, and my family were happy there. But it is, it is too much, too many apartments. It's embedded within single-story homes, and it doesn't fit, in my opinion, and some of the people that I spoke to. So I hope that you consider, reconsider again, the opposition of this plan. Thank you very much.
If, you said you'd wish something else would be built there, what would you recommend being built there in its place?
Single-story townhomes. Something aesthetically pleasing, but also that brings value of property, but worth to the community. In other words, you know, when something happens in the neighborhood, police officer's there, and we report it. It's almost like it's expected something's going to happen, and I don't want that to continue. I don't know. I mean, perhaps maybe I should have gotten, gotten more involved in my community in this sense. I wasn't aware there was, this was being planned in two thousand fourteen, especially with the apartments down the road on Hemlock. Those were three stories, and I know that's common with the space that's available, but I, I... Family residents are good and welcomed, but more apartments, it, there's just way too many.
I'm assuming you've lived in the neighborhood since, before the other apartment complex was built?
The one directly across from us is the Pacifica, and that was already pre-existing. And next door to me, they're single-story, they're more like duplex homes or apartments, but they look more like homes, not apartments. And I live on, it's about an acre, maybe almost two acres, because my dad lives next door. So we just kind of fence everything in together. And, you know, people come and go. People come and go all the time, and that's, that's my concern. My fear for the kids and my nieces and nephews that also live next door and the...
I just have a question. If, if this type of product was, let's say, for sale, maybe in the same fashion, is that something that, you know, we would be for? Even though they, you know, they, they might look like apartments, but they were more condos? Is that, is it, is it the for rent that is the concern?
I think that would bring balance, in my opinion, to the community, because people will take pride in their home, in their house, of their property versus apartments. Possibly not.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Rafael Brugeras.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, staff, guests, and residents. I drove by there yesterday, and I looked at that lot very well. I got out of my car, and all is, all is there is dirt. Old trees, branches, garbage bags, stray cats. Now, I understand what she means, because I know Hemlock, from Hickok to Frederick. And I know that they are old apartments that have been there for a long time, and we have residents that don't care. By, by, by looking at this display, this model, the new building going up in that particular area will brighten it up, because when you go from Hickok to Frederick at night, it's dark. There's nothing there. Nothing but the houses that she mentioned with one light. If you build something what we just saw right here, it will lighten up the whole neighborhood. It won't be dark anymore going into the, into the street. Second of all, there's a lot of three-bedroom apartments. I know there's a lot of people probably would have left to move out of those old neighborhoods or those old apartments into something new. Now, it would be nice if it was not Section Eight, and everybody would work. I hope the owner will work on that first, before he converts it into Section Eight, if he has to. And the only way that happens is if nobody rents, because it's too high. Then that's when Section Eight comes in. But if you could keep it like the one we have right here on East Street, I mean, around Walmart and Marino Beach. East, I used to live there, those apartments. If you keep them like that, because that's a nice building, those are nice apartments, they make that corner look good. This project can make this corner look good. And I, and I have, and I understand what she's saying, okay? But I believe that this project can help that neighborhood a lot more than not, okay? So, look at it. They're doing everything they can. They're providing a lot of parking, so people can park inside instead of outside. They're going to have a manager on-site, so they'll be able to control what goes on on-site, okay? They're going to have recreation, pool, gym, more than probably the other ones have. So we need to consider this project for that neighborhood, so it can enhance that part of the street, especially heading towards more Hickok. If you go there at night, it's dark. It gets nicer when you head towards, um, um, not Jack in the Box, but In-N-Out. That's where everybody's at. That's where all the lights at. But on this side of town, there's no light. By adding this project and looking at it, look at it well, it's well-built, well-designed. And if it could be well-managed, it can help their community, and hopefully it'll bring up their value of their neighborhood. So consider what we want to do, and I do have respect for her for coming up here and mentioning everything that goes on in that neighborhood, because I know that neighborhood. Now, can it get better? Yes. If we do our part, the rest of the neighborhood could probably get better. So I do want that, I would love to see that neighborhood enhance itself, especially in District Five, okay? District Five also needs help. It's an old part of town that needs a new face.
Thank you, Rafael. I have Shiv Talwar, but I'm assuming you already spoke, so unless you want to come up again, I'm going to skip you up to Liz Berry.
Everyone, my name is Liz.
The mic, you can pull it down if you want. There you go.
Not used to this.
No worries.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Elizabeth Berry, and I have lived in Marino Valley, Sunnymead, since nineteen forty-seven. And yes, I've seen a lot of changes. You have brought a lot of good changes and not-so-good changes to the area. I agree with this young lady on a lot of things that she said. I understand where she wants things more family than apartments and everything, but I'm in favor of these apartments. The only thing I'm not in favor of is the one-way-in, one-way-out. That is a disaster waiting to happen. But I may be able to help him with that dilemma. We own property. We own quite a bit of property. Absolutely no Section Eight. Absolutely. I'm, I'm not against the poor, but no Section Eight. And once you start it, you'll never be out of it. You are locked into it. I agree with the parking on the inside, because we have so many problems with parking up and down the street. And that's just ridiculous. And I agree with the gentleman saying that this is just a vacant lot. It is, it's just plain old dirt lot, and this would be a nice thing to bring to the neighborhood. Like I say, I'm in favor of it. Or isn't, oh. I agree with the condos. I think that would be a plus rather than apartments, because people are more apt to take better care of something that belongs to them rather than renting something that belongs to someone else. So that is something interesting to think about. Anyway, I met the gentleman tonight, and I, like I told him, I'm in favor of the apartments. I think it'd be nice. And thank you very much for your time.
I have a question for you before you step down. One of the first things you said is you didn't like the idea of having a single point of access, and that there was something you could do to help them, because you own a lot of property. What, what did you mean by that?
Oh, we own property at the back of where he wants to build. We own half that at the back. My nephew does. And he lives in Washington, and I'm representing him tonight. And I came to talk to the man that was doing this.
Are you talking about you own property facing the knuckle on, what is it, POTUS?
On that map?
I was just curious.
That map up front.
There's a, on the big TV? Yeah.
Okay.
Correct? So you're, you're proposing to talk to them about having an additional entrance off to the east?
We have.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Okay. Swiggle Street? Thank you very much. With that, I don't see any more speakers. Anybody else want to speak on this before we close the public comments? Nope. Okay, public comments are now closed. Moving on. Out of this. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Typically, it's customary to invite the applicant back if they want to rebut any of the public comments.
I was moving to that. With that said, would you like to come up and rebut anything you heard, or? All right. Thank you very much. Okay, so we're moving on now. Commissioner, discussion. Anybody have any questions or comments? No, you can just push the button. I see you over there.
So my, I, I think it's a, I think the concept of the project is nice, but I, I do have concerns about single in, single out. You have a hundred and eight spa, it's going to be provided with a hundred and nine spaces, and there's going to be queue times in the mornings and evenings and whatnot, where it's just going to be a cluster, and, and anybody that's trying to get in and out of Building C, it will be stymied to get in and out of their, you know. It's just going to be a parking lot in front of probably all of Building C. I also, I, I don't, I couldn't find this section. I'd like to understand what's going on on the east side or west side of Building A and Building B as far, in relationship to the access to the three lots that are on adjoining contiguous to the back part of the property. So, so anyhow, but for, for my first question, I guess, I'd like to understand, from a transportation standpoint, you know, there's no traffic signal or anything in and out of this with the single you know, there's no traffic signal or anything in and out of this with the single access. It just seems like there's, uh, there would be a significant amount of time of queuing in and out of this, out of this. Um, and there's no stacking coming off, off of Hemlock into the property. And so, I, I was just was wondering from a transportation standpoint, did they do a traffic analysis to understand kind of the, the morning and afternoon, um, peak traffic?
Mike Lloyd with Public Works. This project was not required to do a traffic study. Um, the number of units did not justify a traffic study given the traffic projections.
Okay, so, is, is that, is, is there, is there other, uh, I mean, is there other like-type density with single access? It seems like it, if any blockage happens in that single access, emergency vehicles, whether cops or ambulatory or, or whatnot, would be stymied to be able to have access to any of this.
Generally speaking, um, the number of access points is driven by, uh, emergency response a, as you're indicating. So, we typically reply, uh, rely upon, uh, fire department input. And so, I, I would defer to Paul if, if he would to indicate, uh, the number of units per access point.
Yes, this, um, particular project, Paul Yellos from Fire Department. Uh, this project meets the threshold for a single access point. We have enhanced fire protection features such as fire sprinklers. We have two private hydrants on site. We have good circulation. Our, uh, fire department operations could also be, uh, conducted across the street there. There's a fire hydrant directly across the street from this project on Hemlock. So, unless there was, uh, a larger density or a larger number of, of units, we would not require the developer, the contractor to add another, uh, access point for us, so. And then with the fire lanes being clearly marked and enforced by the property management there, um, that, that would be something we would rely on to maintain that access.
Can I, uh, Chairman?
Yes, sir.
While I'm on a roll?
Keep going, you got the mic.
All right, the, uh, then can somebody explain to, what, what is the, uh, property, property boundary treatment on the east side of the property or west side of the property, uh, adjacent buildings A and B? Is, is that masonry wall? Is that solid or is that access where it looks like there's a, an attempt to have an access easement going back to the three houses that are, um, on the west side of this property?
Yes, um, all three sides are gonna have decorative block walls. There is the access easement right there on the west to the proper, the three, um, single-family homes that exist in the back. It was decided that it was not in the best interest of this project to have acts, um, entrance or exit off the easement. Originally, when this project came in as the 18-unit condo project, the entrance and exit were off the easement. But when the, the project came in, in, um, 2014 and the request for more units, it was found that it would be more, um, it was better for the site to have this, the single entry in the center of the site.
So, so just to make sure I understand it, there's going to be a block wall all along the east, east or west property, property line?
Yes.
And, and the easement that's back there, is that, what, what kind of, what improvement is that gonna be? Is that just a dirt road or what is that?
Yes, it remains the dirt road in the, the same existing condition as it is now.
Is there any, is there, I didn't see any conditions for any improvements along Hemlock. There's no stacking, there are no right turn in or, or anything. Yeah, I, I, I personally have real problems with the, there's a small throat in, in, in entrance into this. But anyhow, I'm not a transportation engineer. I just, I just get a sense that there's gonna be real, real clusters and angst among the residents that are in there. You know, I could, you know, I think the project's great absent Building C. If Building C wasn't there or half of Building C wasn't there where you could have a, a stack, a turn lane or, you know, or wider in, a wider throat to get in and out of this thing, you might have some, you know, it might be more convenient long-term. But, um, anyhow, let's listen to the rest of the Commissioner concerns.
Any other questions? Mr. Nichols?
Um, yes. One of the things I noticed was, uh, your carport, which is wonderful for apartments. But the first thing that stood out, ah, we can have solar panels. Then when I read through your specs, it says that's for the future. My concern is if you're relying on it that way, it'll never get done. So, I don't know why that was, approach was taken. I also didn't see, um, I know there was one parking space over, if I'm correct. And no, um, parking space designated for a charging station for anybody's car. Because that can be rotated throughout whoever has electric cars, their time to charge their car. And then my other concern was how many of the units are designated for disabled? I didn't see that. So, those are my same concerns. I do share the same concern Commissioner Sims has in regard to traffic as well.
I have a question. There's a lot of talk, um, here tonight and at some other projects going around the city as to what is about Section 8 housing. Could you guys give me a brief description or better understanding of what exactly Section 8 is? And is a project designated Section 8 or can people apply for Section 8 funding for a specific residence?
All right, so, there's a basic overview. Section 8 housing is a HUD subsidized voucher that, uh, people apply for. There are very, very long, in the order of years or decades, waiting lists to obtain those vouchers. There's a very limited number of them. Once a family obtains such a voucher, they then use that to take any housing that they want to, that will accept it. Um, and it's a, they pay part of the rent and the, the voucher will pick up, uh, a fixed amount as well. Uh, in California currently, landlords, uh, have the ability to reject Section 8 housing. Uh, they're allowed to discriminate basically and say, "We don't take Section 8 housing." Uh, however, there is a bill that's currently in committee, uh, in Sacramento that would prohibit that. A number of states do prohibit that and, and would force landlords to accept it. In many cases, uh, especially with unit, you know, nicer units such as this, jurisdictions will see Section 8 housing as a benefit because it's, it has a number of other certain requirements with it. Can't have any criminal activity, people with felonies in the house. So, it does, uh, it does add a certain element of, of enforcement also to protect against, uh, difficult tenants. Uh, but it's strictly at this point, at the discretion of the property owner, whether or not to accept those vouchers or not.
In, in clarifying, it, the apartment complex itself would not be designated Section 8 housing?
And I don't, I'm not aware of any such designation. There are designations where properties will come in to get certain tax incentives by setting aside a certain number of their units for certain low-income qualified tenants who may or may not also be Section 8 recipients. So, that may be the confusion, that may be what, what people are thinking of when you're saying Section 8 housing. Um, this, my understanding, this is not a, uh, a low-income housing project that has certain quotas for low-income qualified tenants.
The, the development company and the management com, agency don't have to apply for some special approval or license to become Section 8 accepting?
No.
Anybody can come into any apartment complex, residential, rental unit, whatever and say, "Hey, I have Section 8 funding voucher and I want to rent this building." It doesn't matter.
HUD does have to, uh, HUD has their own inspection process and approval and approval to make sure that the property is not substandard. So, a, a property could be disqualified from accepting Sec, Section 8 by HUD or the local housing authority, but, um, it's not a pre-qualifying circumstance as far as I'm aware.
That explains a lot. I was at a community gathering a couple of weeks ago and there were a lot of people concerned about Section 8 housing and I was uneducated on it and now I know a lot more. Appreciate it. Thank you. One of the other questions I have is LD7, they're talking about BMPs and water quality management. That's, I write a lot of the WQMPs. And I don't see any water quality management feature on this property. I see a little open area that's not paved and I'm assuming that's where some BMP is going to be installed. But how is this project going to address water quality concerns?
Yes, good evening. Vince Ron with the Land Development Division. To answer your question, Chair, a little, there, there are two, there, there are several BMPs throughout the site. The two major ones are going to be infiltration trenches and, uh, the larger, they're both similar in size, but they, one will be in between Building B and D in the landscape area. And the other one will be just north of Building C in a landscaped area. And they also have a few other, uh, types of, uh, fossil filters, uh, throughout the site and, uh, I believe a couple more gravel infiltration pits as approved with a PWQMP.
And then my final question is the driveway easement to the west? I believe that is an easement that's on the neighboring property allowing the neighboring property owners access to their property and it's not on the specific property?
You know, it, it looks from, from this, from the site plan that it's, that it's actually part of this property that grants it to those homes. I, I'd have to, I'd have to look at the file in more detail.
Well, the question I had is, that I was leading towards is, I'm also slightly concerned with having a single point of access. If the front or the southern portion of the project was mirrored and Building C was on the west and Building A, B, and D were on the east, it would gain the ability to have secondary access through that driveway easement. And I, I, it's not a make-or-break situation. Fire department seems to be okay with it, but in the past, we've turned down projects because they didn't have more than one point of access. It, it does pose a traffic issue in the morning and the evening, people coming in and out in an unmetered intersection with a lot of cars coming in and out in the morning. Plus, if somebody crashes or breaks down, you're blocking half the road. It's, it's not good.
You know, one of the challenges with, with the site because of early on was the constraints was the width and the circulation on site. And, uh, you know, we, we, we went round and round internally trying to, trying to come up with a good circulation, which is why it was suggested if the properties, uh, additional properties can be purchased. And one of the challenges with access through that easement or, or on that, on the west side is, uh, there's that, if you will, that, uh, right degree, two rights, uh, by Building B where it's a 90-degree angle, two of them. So, it's, it's, it was, it was posing a challenge to get emergency vehicles through that and negotiate those turns with a, with a viable site plan. So, it was, it posed a challenge.
If I can, if I may just add a little bit, uh, with regard to the site design, you talked about the BMPs already and, and where the water quality treatment areas would, would be located. If you flip-flop the design because of the drainage on the site, the topography on the site, you may not be able to achieve the same sort of BMP. So, there's a lot of moving parts when it gets to that. We could, we could ask the architect to come up, but that would be one of the obvious challenges I would see.
And I know I said last question, but this is my last question. We have handicap parking and we have a lot of other parking stalls. Do we have electric vehicle charging stations here? Do we have any other designated parking for low emissions, natural gas? I know Cal Green requires a certain amount of those parking stalls be designated as such?
Currently, the standards are for commercial projects. So, as a residential, this project wasn't required to have either a charging station or the low emission spots designated?
Okay. That's my question. I didn't realize that Cal Green didn't apply to residential. But I, I'm learning a lot tonight. Thank you very much. And we have a couple more speakers. Mr. Commissioner Gonzalez?
Hi, I, I just want to add to Paul's, uh, comment on Section 8. My, my day job is, I, I work for the Housing Authority, so I'm, I'm fully aware of, there's families, seniors that, that are voucher holders right now and, and they, right now, it's a, it's a landlord's market. They're, they're being turned away because the economy's improved and people can pay high rent. So, it's, 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 it's not easy and, um, again, it's a choice that landlords have. And they do their screening. Our inspectors do, our inspectors do housing quality standards inspections and, and, uh, and it's, it's, it's a partnership between the Housing Authority, the, the family, the, the tenant and, uh, and the landlord. So, um, be more than willing to, uh, you know, have a, maybe a, uh, a presentation if, if the commission would like or e, even the city council to, you know, do a little bit more education on Section 8 housing and, uh...
Yes, because, uh, the governor has actually declared an affordable housing shortage and that, um, we not, may not have much choice or say at the local level in dealing with the issue. A lot of bills are pushing through the legislature right now, which is separate from Section 8 housing.
Any other comments?
Want to add a, a few things of, uh, as far as, you know, the single point of access or two points of access, I, you know, I, I'm concerned if, if these type of smaller projects that don't quite meet the threshold, don't require two points of access. We, we, we just gotta make sure that we're not, um, you know, that we're meeting the standard requirements and not, you know, customizing every single project. If, if not, maybe we, we, we need to revisit what, what is required for, for two points of access to make it safer, make it, make more sense. I, I just want to make sure that we don't, you know, our, our experts, our fire department and transportation experts don't require it. If not, maybe that's something we, we need to revisit and, and see if, if these type of, of multi-family projects require additional, um, points of access, uh, so it makes more sense. Just want to put that out there.
I, I, I mean, the analogy for me on this is, and I appreciate the comments from Fire Department, that this meets the threshold and I don't know what the minimum threshold for that. So, I don't know if it's got just squeaked over, but I, I would have likened this to having a big truck trying to go up Chiracco Summit. And yeah, you can get up the hill, but you went five miles an hour and you caused, you know, aggravation and angst for every other driver on the road. So, you know, it, yeah, it got up to the top of the hill and, and the, so, long story short for me is, is I like the project. I don't like Building C. I think it could be modified for 31 units rather than 39 units. And you could, you could improve the ingress and egress. I still think it would be marginal at that, but I think it's a, a person should be able to develop their property and it's the right zoning for this. I just think, but not every project should be optimized or maximized for number of units at the expense of safety and, and convenience and use, use, usability. So, I, I personally will be voting no on this as is, um, so.
Any other questions or comments? I don't see any hands going up. Would anybody like to make a motion? Everybody jump up at once.
Applicant want to respond?
Oh, it's downlit over here. Get my paperwork out. I would like to motion to approve Resolution Number 2016-19 and thereby certify that this, that this item is exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA as a Class 32 categorical exemption. SEQA Guidelines, Section 15332 for infill development and Number 2, approved plot plan PA14-0027 based on the findings contained in the resolution and subject to the conditions of approval included as Exhibit 8 of the resolution. Do we have a second?
A second.
I have a motion. Commissioner Baker, could you hit the second button? Have a motion and a second? Please cast your vote.
Oh, okay, is, is there still a, a opportunity to talk before we, uh, vote?
We have a motion and a second. The vote's on the table. We have a motion and a second. The vote's on the table. I guess if you really wanted to talk, I could let you, but...
I just, as is, like I said, my, my vote will be no. So that's for that. But I, I do, I, I don't know where everybody else is at. But we just heard that there was not a traffic study done for this for whatever reason. It didn't meet the minimum threshold for that. Instead of a vote, and I don't know where the vote, we certainly proceed on and go with that. But a potential could be is to continue this and allow the, allow a transportation study to be done to see what the actual real deal is on this instead of speculate. And come back with a little bit more information and see what we have.
We have a motion and a second on the table, so if you, let's see how the vote comes out. And if it doesn't pass, then we'll make some other motions. Waiting on Commissioner Nichols. All votes have been cast. Motion passes five to two. Do we have a staff wrap-up on this item, please?
Yes, this is a, an item that is appealable. If there's anybody that is interested in appealing the project, they can file an appeal through the Community Development Director to the City Council within fifteen days of this action. And that item would be scheduled for a City Council hearing within thirty days of the appeal.
Thank you very much. That moves us on to the second item tonight, which is PA One Six Dash Zero Zero One Three Tentative Parcel Map. The owner is Kathleen Catherine Cormes. And the case planner is Mr. Gabriel Diaz.
We're trying to get the, can our IT folks put the image up for item number two?
Thank you, Commissioner and Chairman. Gabriel Diaz here, Associate Planner with the city. We're here to view case PA One Six Dash Zero Zero One Three Tentative Parcel Map Three Seven One Oh Four. The project is located at the northeast corner of Jarenella Court and Alessandro Boulevard. It's within Council District Three. The zone is Residential Three R Three. The applicant representative is Lauren Sandberg, and I believe Lauren is here today. He's the project engineer. The owner is Catherine Cormes. LGS Engineering Inc. is providing tentative parcel map Three Seven One Oh Four, which we see up there. There's an aerial photo. Back to the, the map. It's going to subdivide one legal parcel into two parcels on one point, one gross acres of land. The property does not, does have two separate assessor parcels currently. Parcel One and Parcel Two were established prior to nineteen seventy-two, prior to, to the pre-subdivision map act. Sometime thereafter this occurred, the two parcels were transferred by grant deed to the current owner. This essentially established the two parcels into one legal parcel. So as we... You can see that at the northeast corner of Jarenella Court, there's two parcels on our, on our land use map here. And there are two separate assessor parcel numbers, but legally it is one parcel. So the proposed map is intended to formalize the subdivision. The project site has been improved and includes four existing family homes on the area there. The areas are, the areas surrounding the project to the northeast, south, and west are zoned, single-family residential R Three. There are existing single-family homes to the west and east, to the north and south are empty lots. Alessandro Boulevard and Jarenella Court are the two main access roads to the parcel map. All four of the existing homes have existing onsite parking. No, no new development is being proposed with this proposal. The lot, the lot proposed are consistent with the city development standards for lot size, lot depth, lot width within the R Three zone. Public notice was sent to all property owners within three hundred feet. The notice was published in the paper, Press Enterprise, on August thirteenth. The project site was posted onsite on August twelfth. Environmentally, this project has been reviewed and has been determined that it will not have a significant effect on the environment and qualifies for an exemption under the provisions of SEQA as a Class Fifteen categorical exemption, Section One Five Three One Five for minor land divisions. It's one parcel becoming two parcels. Staff recommendation, recommend that the plant commission certify that PA One Three, I'm sorry, PA One Six Dash Zero Zero One Three Tentative Parcel Map Three Seven One Oh Four qualifies as an exemption in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines, Section One Five Three One Five Minor Land Divisions, and approved case number PA One Six Dash Zero Zero One Three Tentative Parcel Map Thirty Seven One Oh Four, subject to the conditions of approval and attached resolution. This concludes staff presentation. You have any questions?
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for staff? Commissioner Gonzalez.
Mr. Diaz, is, I just want to make sure that Parcel One, based on the structures, existing structures, will still be non-conforming, correct?
Correct.
Just want to put that out there.
Any other questions for staff? Perfect. Let's move on to the applicant. Would the applicant like to say anything?
Good evening. Lauren Sandberg with LGS Engineering. Really don't have anything to say. I'm just here to answer any of your questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Moving right along. Any public comment speaker slips on this one?
No.
And keepin' moving right along. Would the applicant like to reply to anything they heard from the public? Okay, then, public comments is now closed. Let's move on to commissioner discussion. Do we have any questions or concerns? I don't see anybody's hands going up. Is Jarenella Court going to have any improvements included with the subdivision?
No.
Being on the tentative and it shows corner cutback dedication, future curb and gutter and sidewalk and median on Alessandro.
Correct.
Not part of this subdivision?
No, I think there, there is part of the dedication at a future point.
As far as the actual improvements go?
But no actual improvements are, are being done at this time.
And on Parcel One, there's three single-family residences. Are they all the same owner and occupier? Like mom, kid, grandma, that kind of thing? Or is it separate families and is that legally allowed on this project?
I'm not sure what the, who's in each building, but I believe they're just grandfathered in. They were built sometime long ago. They, they each seem to have their own yard. I went out there and took a look as closely as I could to some of these properties, but I didn't walk onsite and I didn't speak to any of the residents onsite. But I believe the owner that owns all of them, I'm not too sure if they live onsite, but is trying to sell one of the parcels, so.
That was leading, my next question is who is, who is pursuing this land split? And you just said it's the owner, so.
Yes. When, it, it was, I'm obviously the planner here, but when I took this project in, I was like, well, what's going on? You look at the aerial GIS, there's two parcels and why is this in? And it's just, I think throughout the years, the grant deeds made it one legal parcel with one owner. But the, the two parcels are on the GIS and RSS by the county as two separate.
Well, if you look at that and try to hold that for fact, if you look at Mountain View, there's a cul-de-sac in the neighborhood on top of Mountain View.
Yeah.
I think it's kind of hilarious. Okay, thank you. We have another commissioner rating. Commissioner Sims.
Thank you. What's, what was the zoning, the underlying zoning?
R Three.
So that would mean three units of the acre?
Correct, net acre.
Net acre. And what will the parcel map create for each lot? Half acre?
No, they'll, they'll meet the, the zoning requirements for the R, for the R Three zone.
The minimum lot size for an R Three is ten thousand square feet. So we will have two, two sites that are meeting the acreage requirement or the square footage requirement. The number of units on Parcel One would have three units, which would be outside of the requirement. So it would be legal, non-conforming. And then the setback on Parcel One for the home in the rear will be substandard, which it already is.
Okay. My second question is, 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 are, are all the units on the property in the before and then in the two parcel condition, are they all on sewer or are they all on septic?
Don't believe there's any sewer out there. I think it's all septic. That's just my assumption.
We don't have that information.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not sure that this is even legally, that you can create a lot and have, I, I know you can have more than one home on a half acre on septic. That is, that's just not allowed. So I, I, I don't know what this puts from a State Water Resources Control Board. If you went to the regional board, this would be strictly disallowed. So I think we're walking in, we're creating, I, I personally don't have a problem with the split if this is, you know, because it's pre-existing, but this is perpetuating something that...
Making the problem worse.
It's just making a problem worse, exactly.
One thing I would like to know is if they are on septic, do the three buildings on Parcel Two share the same leach fields? Or do they all have their own leach fields and septic tank?
I apologize. I don't have the answer for that tonight. If this is an important issue, my recommendation would be to continue the item until we can get those answers for you. But there's nobody here that could answer the question, unless the applicant's engineer could.
My assumption is, is that the single-family residence that is to the north end of Parcel Two, or Parcel One, my assumption from an engineering standpoint is that the leach field is off to the east. And by putting this line in, my assumption would be that the leach field would be disconnected from the property. I, I think that's something we need to answer before we can make any kind of educated decision.
And the only reason I know about the leach field is, is my original intent was to subdivide on the assessor's parcel lines without knowing anything else. In talking with the owner, the fence was actually moved five feet easterly, which is where the lot line is now proposed, to facilitate the leach field for that back house. So the, the leach field is within the fence and will be within the property. I just don't know if it's one leach field for those three houses or three.
Could, could I add to that? The, the way the north, north-south new parcel line subdivision, subdividing this, that line does meet the setback requirements for the two homes to the east and west. Maybe it just came out there like that by luck, but that is something we did review.
From a, I, I, from a septic system and leach fields and the, the tank, there are certain minimum requirements for the septic tank, proper plus the leach field from property lines and from, because, you know, you don't want the leach field to fail and it goes into your neighbor's yard. And so I, I would suggest that we at least understand what that situation is. I, I, you know, I, because that could be a big deal.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yes, I, I just want to add, did some single-family development in Herpa Valley with a similar situation. It was new development though, and, and my understanding was that for new development, septic system, it's half acre minimum. So Parcel Two would be okay. Parcel One, that's where we, we need more information if, if it's just grandfathered in. You know, they might be okay, but I know for new development, if you want to put a septic system, you need a minimum of a half acre.
Any questions? I, I have a feeling Commissioner Sims would like to make a different type of motion tonight.
Let me, let me back up.
I, I'm okay with continuing the item to get a little bit more information, just to be on the safe side. I don't, but it's a caution. I know that's not what the applicant wants to hear tonight, but I, I'm okay with continuing it, just to get that extra little bit of info.
Just, if I may, just for the applicant's benefit, we do have another special meeting that's going to take place on September eighth. We will do everything we can to try and get back by September eighth to answer this question. If that's okay with the commission, but I do, I did want to let you know that, so you don't have to wait a whole month.
On its face, I don't think anybody here has a problem with subdividing land. There's just some technical things we want to make sure we dot all every i and cross every t.
I, I don't know if we'll be able to find out where the systems are, but...
Yeah, just snap your fingers, make it happen.
And if, and if that's the case, if we don't, if we do need more time, we'll, we'll let you know, but we'll need to get the answer.
Well, I, I, I think for, for clarity for my sake is just, I, I think the answer is it's on septic. And maybe you could verify if there, I think it'd be a simple call to Eastern Municipal Water District to see if there is sewer or, or if there was, and if there is, any of the homes are connected, the, the units are connected on there. And then I, I think the second, the staff should call Santa Ana Regional Water Quality Control Board or, and/or Riverside County Health Department and make the, find out what the minimum requirements are on this.
I'm going to lean on the guy from Western Municipal Water District's opinion. Okay, with that said, what do you recommend, continuing to September eighth?
That would be my recommendation, yes.
Then I'd like to make a motion to continue this item to the next regular meeting on September eighth, two thousand sixteen. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Go to this item, vote. I made the motion. Who seconded?
I did.
You can, either one.
Somebody jump in. Perfect. Now let's cast your votes. Mr. Sims, Commissioner Baker? Perfect. Motion passes seven zero. This item is continued to the next regular meeting on September eighth, two thousand sixteen. Do we have a staff wrap-up on that item for continuation?
It's just continued.
Perfect. One of the things I forgot to do this, before the meeting even started, I was going to do this right at the front, but today was the State of the City address and I wanted to give tremendous thanks, even though I wasn't part of the State of the City address. I had nothing to do with it. I was just an onlooker. I wanted to give thanks to the media staff. They did a bang-up job. I know moving everything, all the equipment from council chambers over to the ballroom and then back for tonight's meeting, getting everything set up is unreal. So I'd like to thank Tim Carroll, Rob Rosen, Bob Lorch, Larry Jaime, Stephen Morale, and Chris DeVoe. They did a bang-up job and they're doing a great job every night. And I really appreciate everything they do for us. Thank you, guys. Any commissioner wrap-ups or comments?
Yes. As I've told you in the past, I've been participating with the League of California Cities Planning Committee members. I attended a meeting up in Sacramento to plan the Planning Commissioners Academy for twenty seventeen. So it was a really good event. I'll share it with Erlen to see what he likes that we're putting forward in classes. One thing was determined from our academy that we went to that it was geared more too much towards planning staff and not planning commissioners. So we're rectifying that.
One of the things I'd like to see in that meeting, if you do have more time to give input on it, is giving the planning commissioners themselves a rundown of how the meetings run and how things work. Because when we went up there, it was telling us about SEQA and the finer points of deciding what, what is SEQA exempt, what isn't SEQA exempt, but didn't really give you any education on how the academy, the mechanics behind it.
We got that covered.
I would like to just give a little motion or mention to Commissioner Jeff Barnes. He's going through some serious family issues lately. I just want him to know that my thoughts and prayers are with him and I think everybody up here shares those sentiments. And I wish him and his family all the best in this speedy recovery. Do we have any other staff comments or commissioner comments before we... Do we have any other staff comments or commissioner comments before we adjourn tonight? Nope, I don't see anything. I would like to adjourn tonight's meeting to the next regular meeting of the planning commission, September eighth, two thousand sixteen, seven PM, right here in city council chambers. Thank you very much and have a great night.